Good evening. This evening is the first of our three budget workshops. We do have a fourth workshop on hold in the event that it's needed. This evening and moving forward, what you'll hear is not only the typical budget work session type of dialogue, but you'll also see the impact that COVID has had on our school district in the now and moving forward. We're hoping that we're able to present a budget that allows us to not only forecast what next year will bring, but bring us the same adaptability that last year's budget brought us in putting together this year's three different learning models. So tonight, we have Darren Kenny, our Assistant Superintendent for Business, that will begin, and then we will close with our Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources, Mike Leone, to discuss the impact of staffing in the now and moving forward. I will also just update the board that in some years, we've had our budget guidelines set at this meeting, and some years, we've have not had that available to our following meeting. So this year is one of those years where we will present our budget guidelines at our following board meeting, just given all of the different information we've had to process. So at our next meeting, we're hoping to have budget guidelines approved, and obviously, we have a lot to process this year, so hence the delay. We are meeting for an extended time to bring forth guidelines for your consideration. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to our Assistant Superintendent for Business, Darren Kenny.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm going to move pretty quickly because I want Mr. Leone to be able to have time, and I know we're all looking forward to getting to Pittsburgh Pride and have a lot of information here to cover. We're going to start at a high altitude on this and work down to maybe what I would call middle altitude on the revenue side. We're going to look at our two largest revenue sources being the property tax cap or tax levy and the state aid process. I just want to draw your attention to there are some slides in here that I'm not going to touch on at all, or I'll barely touch on them. They're there so that when this goes up on the website, they're there for the public to have at their disposal. I also want to caution you that these, this information is straight from the governor's state aid runs. It has not been adjusted. You know how every year, we adjust it for certain known factors, but so that you could actually see, going back to those runs, we kept it the same. But as more data comes in and we do more data analysis, I anticipate changes. And to that effect, I'd like to thank Leanne Reister, the Director of Finance, on her hard work on that realm as well. So moving forward, the property tax levy, 76% of our budget is supported by the tax levy. As you know, it was capped a few years ago, known as the property tax cap. Coincidentally, that's almost the exact same percentage of what our budget spends in salaries and benefits. And it's important to note that we are unlike most schools in New York State. They're kind of the inverse, where majority of their aid, or excuse me, their revenue is from state aid and not the tax levy. So looking real quickly at the mechanics of the tax levy, there's basically three major tax levy phrases here. It used to be called a 2% cap, but it rarely ever works out to be 2% because that's only one variable in a pretty complicated formula. The tax levy limit is that calculation that says the maximum that we can go without having to go for a supermajority. Supermajority means 60% of the voters or more have to pass the budget in order to go there. Simple majority is 50% plus one vote. The maximum allowable tax levy is the tax levy limit plus exclusions. And exclusions are things that the voters have already voted on, such as capital projects and the debt services associated. So it's the net amount or the local portion of the debt service minus the building aid that comes in on those projects. We have to track that on a per-project basis. And then the proposed tax levy. As I just said, the proposed tax levy might be more than the tax cap, but you need the supermajority, or it could be at or below the tax cap, needing a simple majority. I provided some additional information that comes from a third-party source, so people don't think it's just me explaining it. Comes from Questar BOSI's as well as, this was fed by the Comptroller's website as well. So that's there for your, as a resource. Looking at how it's calculated specifically for Pittsburgh, you start out with the current year tax levy that the voters approved back in June, $107 million. That is multiplied by what's known as the tax-based growth factor. Please do not confuse that with assessment changes. This is solely on expansion and development within the district borders, and that number is provided by the Comptroller's Office in, excuse me, early January. Then there's payments in lieu of taxes. That's for businesses that, through the County Industrial Development Agency, have certain abatements or phase-ins of their property taxes. So that has to be an adjustment to the tax levy because that comes off the tax rolls. And then we look at the prior year, the tax levy, or capital levy amount, which is that net, and that was, would have been the exclusions from the year before. And that gives us the adjusted prior-year levy. That's what gets multiplied by the lesser of the CPI, Consumer Price Index, or 2%. That's provided to us by the Comptroller also in January. It's the average for the previous 12 months, and in our case, or in the New York State case, it's 1.23%. So that is how much the prior-year adjusted levy is allowed to grow. Then we must decrease by what we project the pilot payments to be for next year, based on the contracts we have from the county at this time. There could be more in the works. We don't know for sure at the moment. And we get to the tax levy limit of $103.5 million. Walking that same number forward, now the exclusions come in. And the exclusions this year are a little bit higher, and that is because of the BOSI's capital project. We pay the debt service to BOSI's, and then we receive BOSI's aid on that debt. So that's, that was something new that was allowed to be factored in last year in the, in the law. So our maximum allowable tax levy is $109 million and a little over $2 million increase over the year before, or 1.9%. That compares to 3.76% last year, so a little, a bit more palatable number. Is there any questions on that? So we will be working on this and finalizing this. I don't anticipate any drastic changes, but if there's any changes or new information regarding the state aid, or the building aid that might change this a little bit, it might be become 1.88 or something like that, but I don't think it's going to be any major So that takes care of our largest revenue. We basically, if we go to the cap, we have $2 million of new funding to support any budget development. Going into the, excuse me, the state aid process, Mike and I thought it was kind of important to show how the process works because it can be kind of convoluted. And at June 30 of the prior year, we close out our books, and through the summer, we close the books and we file all kinds of state reports that are, back in the days when you did it through the paper, was quite voluminous. And we also have to project for the following year what we think we're going to spend. And that's where the, that, all that information feeds into the state, what they call the October database. And when the governor does his budget projections, all that information comes from that October database. Right around January 15th, the governor presents his budget to the legislature, or his proposal, I should say, and a day or two after that, we get the state aid runs, again, based on that October data. Then April 1st, that is the date that the state is legally required in the Constitution to have a state budget. In my 30 years of doing this, in my first 20 years, I could say the number of times it was on time was less than it was. There was one year prior to the tax cap where it was October before the state budget was approved. So you're, you're building a budget and you had no clue what your state aid was going to be. When the legislature, they kind of debate amongst themselves and with the governor, and they come up with an agreement, and when they've, when the budget passes both houses and signed by the governor, it's an enacted budget. So we base it on April 1st, we should have a state budget, but it's not going to happen until after that. Then the April through May timeframe, with the exception of last year, is when we present the budget to the voters. The Board of Education adopts the budget from the superintendent. We present it to the voters, and the voters vote on it. So taking a look at, going back about a month from now to January, when the governor presented his budget, we were all waiting to hear what we were going to hear, and typically, if you'd asked us prior to this year, most people in the business would have said that the governor's budget is traditionally the worst-case scenario, and the legislature does various things to make sure a certain amount of money gets to their constituencies. That's what's known as the shares agreement. It basically breaks the state up into categories or areas, and downstate, make sure it gets a certain amount, New York City, a certain amount, et cetera, percentage-wise, that is. And they advocate, and then they reach a deal with the governor. This year, the governor is banking heavily on getting some federal stimulus money, and we feel that he is likely leading out with his best foot, or pretty close to it, putting the federal government in a position where if they don't come through with the money, the federal government is the ones not supporting New York State schools. So it's kind of an interesting turn of events. The governor said that the state built two versions of the budget, or two scenarios. One is expecting $6 billion, and all of the state aid runs in his proposal are based on that $6 billion in stimulus funds. He is hoping for and feels it's pretty likely that he's going to get closer to $15 billion. However, it was made pretty clear that if he got the $15 billion, there would not be reductions to state aid, but there probably would not be prorated increases to state aid. So right around this time and even before, going back into, say, October or November, we were talking about what our scenarios were, and we basically had three scenarios. Virtually no state aid or no change in the state aid. Using the governor's proposal, whatever that might be, and based on what the governor's proposal is, that's currently our area of focus. And then if the federal funding does not materialize, what about a significant reduction in state aid, say around 15% to 20%? I'm not going to go into depth here on the foundation aid, because you've heard me do it many times, and you've seen me show chart, this chart right here, but foundation aid was a response in 2006, '07, when the state lost the Campaign for Fiscal Equity lawsuit. Said that funding for schools was not equitable and not constitutional, so a new formula was put into place. Unfortunately, foundation aid has never been paid according to formula. And then throughout the years, there's also been various reductions, which you'll see in a few minutes. The governor's 2021, or excuse me, 2122, foundation aid proposal is again, for the third consecutive year, frozen. It's not the first time it's been frozen. It's been frozen more often than it, than it hasn't. This poses a significant problem because as districts change their programs, or they have significant changes either up or down in enrollment, the foundation aid for sound basic education is not changing. So for example, a district has significant declining enrollment. We have a few districts like that in Monroe County. They're actually getting more aid right now per pupil than they should be if the formula was running, like 120% compared to our, around 55% to 60%. For us, part of that is because of full daycare. So again, they're not recognizing that. So moving on, this should be no surprise for those of us who've been around for a while. I think the last three years, the governor has proposed taking what we call the expense or reimbursement-driven aids and combining them all into one. And in our case, the largest ones in that category are BOSI's aid, transportation aid, and what we call instructional materials. And these forms of aid are basically based on a formula that reimburses you based on what you spend. So if a high-need student moves into the district that you didn't anticipate mid-year, and your transportation and other services are much more expensive, you would get aid based on that changing. What the governor wants to do is combine all of them together into services aid and basically treat it like a flat grant. So that would not expand or adjust based on what you actually do. And then it would be tied to some kind of arbitrary formula of whether that would increase or not over time. So this is something he's been trying to do for several years. However, due to the pandemic, he's introduced what he called services aid reduction, and it's about $700 million statewide, or 17%. Not all schools are subject to it because of various formulas having to do with their stimulus allocation and their wealth. We are one of the 237 schools that would receive the reduction. Interestingly enough, 89% of it goes to New York City. And part of that is because, you heard me talk about the shares agreement, the city gets a certain amount of aid, whether they generate the aid or not. So I think that's part of the reason why that happened. So the governor promised, kind of tried to show the shiny object a little bit, if you will, that this, this reduction would be covered by the federal stimulus money, but the question becomes what happens in the following year if that federal stimulus money isn't there to supplant that? Here's where it gets kind of interesting and took all of us by surprise. In the state aid run, both for the current year and for proposing next year, he includes STAR, the 1997 State Tax Assessment Reduction Program. He included that as a state aid. Now, per the law, that is not state aid. That is a state program. We have no input or control over it. That was designed in '97 to give people a little bit of a break on their assessment of their homes, and then they would get a credit on their tax billing. And then over time, some people, if they purchased a house, passed a certain date, et cetera, they actually get it in a rebate check. So I find it interesting, I think it was Niskus said, that it's never been part of state aid, and doing so distorts state aid picture. It also distorts the tax levy picture because STAR has always been part of the tax levy. So for example, in our case, when I showed you what our projected tax levy would be, approximately $5 million of that is STAR. He also introduced what he called local district funding adjustment. So the acronyms are flying wild and crazy here, but that's $1.35 billion, and that's a reduction of state aid right off the top. It's on a per-district basis, and it's equal to the lesser of your STAR payment or the federal stimulus allocation. So if you think about that for a second, it makes it pretty clear there's just a plant going on. He's pulling one thing out and putting another thing in. So again, what happens in following years? So here comes the next acronym, which is four letters. I can never remember it, so I call it Federal Stimulus 2.0. This is the $6 billion that the governor is expecting. He wants to use $3.85 billion to support school aid and STAR. That's a pretty scary thing to say there. Even just the school aid is scary, but even more scary when it says it's funding STAR. So the risk is, he has, if this goes through, he has until September 2023 to expend these funds, so he could spread it out over two years. But he's choosing to use it all in a one-shot for next year. So to try to put this into some of the numbers, and I tried to put it into the three sections, kind of like how we just went through this. So when you look at the New York State aid of the schools, and I, that includes the services aid and all the various categories you normally see, you see the services aid reduction in the 2122 year. Moving down to the middle section, the STAR piece, the 202021, $5.3 million is added in as a, as aid. I guarantee you, if you look at our state aid runs last year that we received at this time and in April, you will not see STAR on there. But he, that's added in, and then turns around, and there's the LDFA adjustment. So the STAR gets added in, and then he gets taken out through that, through that adjustment. Then the federal supplemental funds, CARES funds, last year, we got $195,000. Our aid was reduced by 195, and then the CARES money came in. That CARES doesn't, doesn't exist anymore, so it's not there for 2122, but there is the new form, the Stimulus 2.0, at $5.3 million. So when you put all that together, and this adds up perfectly to the, to the state aid run that we received, you're going from 20, almost 27 million to 28.5 million, or a $1.5 million increase, 5.5%. That's what it looks like on the surface. But let's work with that number a little bit further, kind of peel back the onion to see what's going on here. So that top number in the green, that is our district scenario number two, so to speak. And when we start peeling it back, STAR is not an aid, so let's take the, take that back out and make sure we're comparing apples to apples from what we've done in the past. And what if the federal stimulus funds do not happen? And then you can see the difference there, that we're going from 21 million to 18, or a $3.6 million reduction. So basically, that's how much, just in our district, the governor's not having to spend of New York State money. He's supplanting the federal funds to get there. So that's a swing of $5 million when you look at the difference between those two, and that's what we're looking at if we were in our worst-case scenario, scenario three, with no, no aid. Does that make sense? So kind of the red flags, and I don't really need to go through every single one of them. Just remember that the projections are, for the next two years, the state is projecting some pretty big deficits, but it's using the federal stimulus money in one shot. So the federal money is a one-year thing, but the reductions that are being put into play, those are long-term. So the question becomes what happens in the following years? How do we, how do we get through that? There's not a lot of information that I've been able to find so far, but there's some discussion in, in his new proposal about a school aid growth cap, or excuse me, income gap. So it looks at, when you do your income taxes and you have to put down your county and school district, what, what the income growth is for your school district, and they try to control the aid based on that. So that would further control the ability to play catch-up with the aid. It's speculated the governor is looking very closely at Governor Biden, or excuse me, President Biden's American Rescue Plan, which is $1.9 trillion at this point, and said to be $130 billion for PK through 12 education, which in the grand scheme, that's pretty small percentage of $1.9 trillion. The question is, what's the probability of it passing in time to help? We'll get through both houses without substantial changes to that. So I called this, we already read this book, and if those of you who've been here for a while, GEA or Gap Elimination Adjustment, that's really what we're dealing with. We're going through that again, and I won't go through every single step here, but it started out with the deficit reduction assessment, and then there was federal stimulus funds, the ERA funds to help fund that, and they went away, and then it was the Gap Elimination Adjustment, same story. The federal funding went away, and that's where you see the, the big dip that was here. And then the last few years, the economy got better, and they started to do some catch-up in the GEA way, and now we're right back at it with a big deficit reduction and using federal money to try to fill the gap. The worry is what happens in the future years, because we can look at what the trends were over the last 10 years. Every year, I always give you basically a copy of the state aid runs, if you will, so you can see the various forms of aid. It was kind of challenging this year, taking the old format and using the new way the governor's proposing aid, but we did the best we could. You can see there at the foundation aid, there's no change in it. It's frozen. The light blue area is the services aid, all the various components of services aid. That, over the next couple of weeks, that's what we're going to be looking very closely at as far as the transportation and BOSI's aid, for example, because we probably will not receive quite that much. The governor is betting on that we're going to spend every penny of our budget. We try very hard not to do that. And that is also a funding source for the governor. He estimates that all schools are doing that, so it's estimated that $3.7 billion in his proposal is schools that won't actually spend all that money. So some of what he reports as state aid never actually gets spent, state aid, excuse me. $259,000 services aid adjustment, building aid, et cetera. Moving on down, you get to the shaded area, and that's the adjusted state aid, and it's matches what you saw earlier with the reduction. And then you have the federal impacts as far as the stimulus money and the STAR amount, back down to that almost $1.5 million increase. So that's what we're working with as of this time. More to come. So over the next few weeks, we'll be looking more into this as well as other things, working with the budget stakeholders. You'll be hearing from everybody at the next work session about their budgets. Staffing and sectioning will be happening, and those are the biggest drivers of our budget, a lot of state aid review, et cetera, and monitoring what happens at the state level and federal level and see what, what the actual state budget ends up being. So our upcoming meetings, our next meeting is February 23rd. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to try to answer them.
I just want to say thank you, Darren, and I, it's important, I think, to really, for everyone in their, their minds to conceptualize the role that the CARES Act and the funds there are playing as it relates to state aid. It's a, it's a 180 that, unlike something we've ever seen before, so people need to be mindful of that. Thank you. So next, we have our Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources giving us his last official presentation. We are hoping it is riveting, given the fact that he will be officially retired as of Friday this week. So thank you, Mike, for being here tonight. Thank you for extending your retirement plans, and we look forward to your presentation.
So thank you. Tonight, it's a, it's always an honor to get to present to the board and, you know, special to do it on my, my last time. Of course, in coming up with this report, I need to thank Elizabeth Carpenter, our Human Resources Coordinator, and also spoke a lot in-depth with Sean Clark, our incoming Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources. So between the three of us, we, we want to give you some insights, sort of big picture with the human, human resources. And in our area of responsibility, it's really all about the personnel processes and matters. We, we hire staff, onboarding assignments. As Darren talked about in the budget, the sectioning and staffing drives a great deal. Contract negotiations, when they, when they come up, we do not have any contracts this year. We have one next year, so we, we're, we're set for the next couple of years pretty well as far as locking in our contractual costs. And then, of course, leadership development and the evaluation process. And I'm going to quickly show you the Human Resources budget itself, which kind of shows the different objects of it. I think as in many of our individual budgets this year, there were things we simply didn't use. Travel and conference was not something that we spent out of the budget as we start to look, because we had to reallocate a lot, and I'm going to talk a little bit about that as we, we move forward. And then as you look at the Human Resources budget year over year, you know, there's about a one-half of 1% increase from this year to next year, which again, is, is driven a lot by the contractual obligations. And, and so the Human Resource Budget by itself doesn't have that big of an impact, you know, 483,000 out of, you know, $130 million budget roughly. But what, where we do have a huge impact is on the sectioning and staffing, which is spread out throughout all of the budgets. It's in the building budget. And so when, what our department tries to do in, in working with the business office, with student services, with, with special education, with the buildings, with all of the departments, is the idea of maintaining that focus on both short-term and the long-term sustainability. Because, right, if you get too focused on the short-term, you know, you might be able to do something today, but then it causes an issue down the line. So you always have to have that constant balance of the thinking. And these are just some of the things we did. One of the things I'm, I'm actually incredibly proud of, and Darren and I worked for, I don't know, Darren, two or three years on this, was around the High Deductible Health Insurance Plan. And when that first came out, a lot of philosophies were to get that as your base and seed it, put a lot of money into that. Darren and I looked at that, studied that, and, and said, we really don't think that's the way to go. And the reason for it is, once you seed that money and you put it in the contract, it's now a negotiable item that you, right, they're going to, there's going to be some expectation of that being in there one way or another. What we also knew is that the High Deductible Plan was going to become more and more the common plan in different places, both outside of school districts and even inside of school districts. So what we did is we negotiated it in as an option, not as our base plan, with the idea that over time, people would naturally come to it. And as we have been looking over the last couple of years, that's exactly what happened. People are coming in, they're coming in with their, you know, health reimbursement account. They're coming in with the use to the High Deductible Plan, so they're requesting it. So we're increasing that plan without seeding money into it, which, if you want a whole primer on it, Darren can give it to you, but, but as far as the... But as far as the ratings or the experience within that plan, by not seeding it, it actually keeps that cost lower over the long term. And I just think that's such a great thing that we worked on for a couple of years, and I just appreciated doing that with Darren. So also when we do it, is we keep thinking about the idea of when we bring in staff, it's about hiring very talented staff, it's about helping to increase their skills while they're here, and then really leveraging their skills to the highest degree possible. So we're always thinking about that as we go along. And this just involves so many people, and everyone on the central office team has had something to do with these, certainly under Mike's leadership. But just a couple of highlights, the nursing restructure that you approved just like a year and a half ago, where we switched from a health aide and a nurse to two nurses. Not only was that good before the pandemic, that was an incredible support that gave us leverage that almost nobody else had. And the neat thing about it, it was almost cost-neutral when we did it. So we increased capacity a great deal with a very little cost basis. We have our instructional technology teachers, which has also been a huge leverage this year. But even before that, when we did that restructure, we actually not only created better capacity, but decreased our costs a little bit. And then, again, things we've done with mass support, reading support, behavioral support, taking that long view, the idea of how do we make sure we're leveraging and getting the very most out of this incredibly talented staff that we had? Because if you're using old systems, you may not be leveraging their talents at the highest level. And that's what we continually seek to do. And I believe that the mass supports, the reading supports, the behavioral supports have not only been important this year, but coming out of this pandemic, when all of our kids are back here next year, that's going to be, I think, a huge benefit to our students. And then I put down judicious use of multi-certified teachers, innovative approach to special education supports. We, I got a chance to work with Elizabeth on a way to support certain kids at one of our elementary schools in a less restrictive environment, and it really wound up working out very well. So again, looking at those structures is always something we need to do. So then I just want to talk a little bit about pandemic impacts in particular. We have that March 20th, 2020 to June 20th, 2020, where, you know, it was really about safety, safely working on-site, staff screening, remote work plans. The Family First Corona Response Act, which was a great stimulus package from the federal government, a great support, but it was a tremendous amount of work that we had to then go through in order to support folks. You know, the contractual provisions then, employee retention. You know, we shut down right away, you know. How do you retain employees and balance that with the economic impacts that it has? And just even things like getting trainings, like our bus drivers, we had to send them to Pennsylvania just to get their license, because you couldn't do it here in New York. So that was the short-term, that was March to June. Now we have July to June of this year. And of course, the big things, I want to talk a little bit about the creation of the temporary learning modes or models, where that's the remote, the fully remote schools, plus the elementary five days a week, and then secondary on the hybrid model. Our department, and as all departments did, right, it really gave a lot, just like our teachers gave a lot, just like our entire staff gave a lot. But one of the things that happened this year is Elizabeth Carpenter took on the role of the remote elementary principal under the guidance of Melanie Ward. You know, you think about that, now Melanie Ward is actually overseeing not only elementary, but the high school. But out of our department, that was also big, because you have a person that's doing their full-time job and taking that on at the same time. And of course, no person can do all of that without the support. So I think about what Tammy has done and what other people have done, even, you know, outside of our departments to support things, to make that happen, which I think is such a great demonstration of what this district does so well, comes together at times like this, and does that with that student focus. You know, we had things like summer retirement, some people just couldn't do it. Some people just couldn't do it, they decided to retire. I already talked about the FFCR way, that's the Family First Corona. The Department of Labor, and I'll talk a little bit about that, we had a nice audit during all of this. You know, ADA accommodations, quarantine issues, and family hardships, fraudulent unemployment claims. So just to give you an idea, fraudulent unemployment claims in this atmosphere of the pandemic are huge, all across New York State. There's been thousands of them. We have gotten 42 of them. And that means 42 times, we have to sit down, go through the process, contact the person, contact New York State, put everything together, and when someone does that fraud, there's an individual there. That means you have to say, this is what you have to do, go ahead and do this, people will come in. But that's 42 different times. Family First Corona Response Act, we had 49 requests for time modification of schedules, time off, remote work plans. Americans with disabilities claim 27. And in that, that's a huge process. You have to sit down with everyone, you have to review medical data, you have to have individual meetings where you go through an interactive process, and then decide what can we do and what can't we do, you know, in support. And then remote work plans, we had to, and I will say, our department leaders, our principals, they really picked up and ran with this. But 39 long-term remote work plans, people that were working fully remote, and then multiple short-term times, because, right, someone gets quarantined, and you have to make the decision, do you have them stay home, or can they work remotely? But if you do that, you have to have the proper remote work plan in place and expectations and everything. So those are just some very real things that we had to deal with. Now, when we look at our temporary learning models, I think what, I believe that, you know, we had that sudden shutdown in March, and our staff went into the mode of doing the very best they could to support our kids from March to June, and they did a good job, they did a good job. Going into this year, it was very clear from the superintendent, and I know the board, is yes, we got through that. For 2021, it has to be better, right? That was clear, and we all agreed with that. So what were our guiding principles? Well, first and foremost, keep our students and staff safe, but then provide a high-quality, robust learning experience, recognize the importance of maintaining a multidisciplinary program, provide opportunities for honors and advanced placement courses. Not a lot of schools went that way, right? Just they didn't have the capacity or ability to do that. Provide our K-5 students the opportunity for an in-person instruction five days a week. That was huge, that was, and then provide secondary students with special needs, the ability to be in-person four days a week. Obviously, that was on a case-by-case basis. You always got to go to the big one, that's in red at the top, keep our students and staff safe. But we were able to balance those. Provide all students with a robust, fully remote learning option, which is something we had to do, and allow student choice to the degree practical and electives in areas of interest, right? We're not going to strip the program down to just the basics, right? We couldn't do everything, but we weren't just going to do the basics. And then keeping students and staff safe. This was fascinating for me, I've never actually built a high school schedule before, and I got to do one for the secondary learning model, which, in truth, Jamie Kogler was probably, you know, 75% of that. Anyway, so there are elementary buildings, you know, we needed to create safe socially-distanced spaces. I do want to say that part of what we do is the contract administration, and not only us, obviously, the superintendent was, you know, the leader on this. But with PDTA, we, like Mike said, this was the year of the MOA, right? And we really went through, we really looked in the contract and said, what do we need to modify for one year that stays true to our values, yet lets us do what we need to do for the models? And, you know, it's times like this that this relationship that we have really pays the big dividends. And then just to talk about, you know, just, I think it's pretty impressive, elementary school, a remote school was 359 students and 24 staff members, so it was like a, you know, good-sized school. Then in our secondary buildings, we needed to be that socially-distanced, you know, we couldn't do pods. But in the plan reduced transition, again, that idea of our secondary fully remote school, did include honors and AP electives, which was really important, right? You know, we wanted to do that for our students. And then Jennifer Marin, again, Melanie Ward oversaw both of these remote schools, and then she had Elizabeth at the elementary, and Jennifer Marin, who's the assistant principal at Sutherland High School, do the secondary. And again, that's while Jennifer continued her duties as assistant principal. So, but here was the thing, we couldn't do all of that with the staff that we had. So what we did is we set up the temporary learning models with our existing staff, which I call the base staff, 2021 base staff, and identified the gaps between a program that met our principles that we talked about and what current staffing could provide. And this is where the reallocation in the budget occurred, plus, you know, any rainy day funds, and Darren can certainly, you know, talk to those, but as he said, it was raining. So we closed the gaps through the use of overages, which is our current teachers teaching a class beyond a normal load. Now, the efficiency in that is versus if you hire someone new, the benefits, right? The benefits remain static, it's just some additional. And then increasing part-time teachers and hiring the one-year regular substitutes, which resulted in the 18.5 FTEs, and it cost about $1.25 million is what it was to do that. Now, when we go back for sectioning next year, the idea is we're pulling those 18.5 FTEs out, and we go back to our base. I will say this, we're going back to base, and here's just some things to keep in mind, that, a couple areas of focus. Programs disproportionately impacted due to safety protocols. When we do sectioning, let's say for music next year, we don't have to add more FTEs to the base than we did at 2021, but we probably want to be a little thoughtful, because music was one of those areas that got hammered by the safety protocols more than a lot of other areas, like the 12-feet and things like that. So we don't know yet, we need to see where we are as far as signing up. The kids, you know, didn't have their traditional signing up for the instruments at the end of fifth grade like they norm, you know, fifth grade as they normally do. So we just want to be thoughtful about maintaining our programs, you know, in our base. Obviously, all of that has to take into account, you know, things like, do we get the aid that we're thinking we're going to get? And then the other area that, you know, there may be some pressure on, although our restructures will help, is our academic intervention support and our behavioral, social, emotional supports as our kids come back. It's just, I think it's just, there's always pressure areas, and those I just think are going to be them. So that's sort of the pandemic temporary learning models. But before, just at the end, I did want to talk a little bit and give you an update, because you, as a board, set forth as one of your budget guidelines, and I know you're meeting to discuss this year's budget guidelines, but for the past few years, one of the budget guidelines was creating a more diverse candidate pool, right? That was one of the guidelines. And, you know, that's us recognizing that having a diverse staff leads to greater inclusivity, benefits the entire organization, and really fits exceptionally well with our core values of being student-centered, a supportive environment for all, being collaborative, progressive, and seeking continuous improvement. Now, what becomes interesting on that is as we were setting out on that work, which, we tried various strategies, and some were very ineffective. I will tell you, going to, I have found, at least so far, going to recruitment fairs didn't really result in us getting too many people to the district, it just wasn't. What was most impactful was when current staff and community members gave us referrals or things like that, that was actually the most impactful. You know, other actions that really helped is we did post and publications or reach out to organizations that support educators of color, that was helpful. But I think that the most important thing was, we were intentional and we made it an area of focus. And I think that is obviously a driving force. It's interesting, because when, just looking at some of the statistics, statewide, there's about 20% of all teachers in New York State that identify as a person of color. Outside of New York City, however, there are 7% of all teachers identify as black or Hispanic, right? And then 175 out of 732 public schools in New York State reported no teachers of color. So when you, and the only reason I share that is, you know, we've checked in with, you know, we do different things with our colleagues, and this has been an area that a lot of people are making a focus, but there's been some, you know, challenges along that line on the recruitment. But this is what we've done in the past three years. Currently, we have 53 staff members who identify themselves as a person of color. Of those, 18 are in a professional or supervisory role or high-level assistance. The remainder would include paraprofessionals, bus drivers, custodians, and accompanists. So those folks aren't in the 18, but now of that, 13 are professional certificated staff, teachers and administrators. Two were hired, so of those 13, 11 were hired in the last three years. Two were hired in 2018, 19, four were hired in 1920, and five were hired this year. And when you look at the change prior to the 2018-19 school year, when you set forth that in your budget guidelines, we were at 1/3 of 1% of our certificated staff being, identify as a person of color. Today, we're at 2.2%. Now, what does that mean? It means we've made progress, by any stretch, we've made progress. Are we at the end? Absolutely not. Do we need to do more? Absolutely, we need to do. But I think that at least we're moving in the right direction over the last three years. So I just wanted to share that with you. I also want to share, it's, you know, it's been a great honor to be a member of this staff and to work for Mike and to serve this board, and, you know, I just can't thank you enough for that opportunity. you enough for that opportunity. And, you know, every one of you is a great colleague, you know? Some of you have become truly dear friends, so, and I just, again, so many relationships that I'll cherish, you know, far beyond this.
Mike, I just want to make a comment. The slides that you shared were incredible. The amount that the HR department has had to do this year, given COVID, has been something beyond one can describe. And all the individual meanings and all of the new COVID things were on top of all the old stuff you had to do. And so, this year, everyone has worked double, triple time, and your work through this COVID has been exemplary, and thank you from the bottom of my heart for staying on through this COVID process. The other thing I just want to clarify is that in the budget that we're presenting, we are taking out all of the additional money we put in for COVID with the anticipation that we're fully reopening. And so, we're hoping for certainly new beginnings next year, and wish you as well a very new beginning starting before that.
Good evening and welcome to the Pittsburgh Central School District Board of Education Meeting. If you could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have an approval of the agenda, please? Thanks, Pete, thanks, Ted. Any edits? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Pittsburgh Pride, a night we look forward to. Superintendent Piro.
The speaker? Oh, okay. Hi, everyone.
Hello.
Hi.
Hi.
I am so excited to see everyone on the screen right now. I get to see all my friends and all the students that are making a huge difference in our district. So, it's so amazing to be here with all of you tonight. And I'm looking at Joseph. Who's that?
Joseph Prusell?
Joseph, how are you?
Good.
Good, it's so nice to see you on Zoom. I'm so proud of you. And so proud of everyone here tonight. So, I just want to share a few words first. I want to thank all of our principals. I want to thank everyone that's nominated our students for being on the screen tonight, and I want to thank our families and our friends that are here to celebrate Pittsburgh Pride tonight. But most importantly, I need to say, I am so thankful and so proud of our students that are on tonight, because you're here because you're making our world a better place. And you're being celebrated by the Boards of Education, because you're a real special person. That means that you do everything that you can to make the Pittsburgh schools a better place, and that's a really important thing, and it's so, so appreciated. And because you're here tonight, we want to really celebrate you and thank you and everyone that's on the screen who's part of your lives to be with you for this special celebration. A couple announcements around the celebration. Our ceremony will also be broadcast on channel 1303, and will also be part of a podcast that will be on our district website, so you can go back and look at. To put things in perspective of how special tonight is, we have 6,000 students in the Pittsburgh Central School District, so think about that. We have 6,000 students. And of the 6,000 students, only 27 will receive this award tonight. Does anyone want to give me a percentage? Does anyone want to take a stab at what percent 27 is out of 6,000? Okay, well, I don't have my calculator in front of me, but it's a really, really small percentage, which means you're extra, extra, extra special. So, how this happened tonight, you're here tonight because we asked buildings, all nine of our buildings, to seek out individuals that they felt exemplified citizenship. And then we asked them to tell us why. And then each building had a committee to look at all the people's names that were submitted and all of the reasons why they were submitted. And then that committee decided the one person from each building that should be recognized tonight, and those people are in front of us today. So, it's a big deal. Beyond tonight's recognition, students will be recognized in a lot of other ways, too, and I think that's important to note. And so, students may be recognized by having their names on bulletin boards in the schools, or morning announcements, or emails sent out, their names might be on a plaque, their recipients may work with their principal, decide on a special privilege, they may get free time, they may get a parking pass, spiritware, they may become class helpers. But beyond tonight, there's going to be something additional that you can look forward to. In keeping with tradition of our Pittsburgh Pride, any students that are in high school, parents are responsible for purchasing a car for Pittsburgh Pride recipients. So, good luck with that. Good luck with that. So, a couple process things. As each student's name is called, we will have, actually, let me back up. So, we're going to rotate, and our board president is going to start out by reading three different recipients, and we're going to do it one at a time, and we're just going to ask you to wave as we're reading about you at the beginning. And then Mrs. Thomas will turn it over to our vice president, Mr. Arusti. He'll read the next three. You'll wave as we're reading for, so we can see that you're there. And then I will follow up with the last three. And then when all is done, all nine are read, we're going to give you a big round of applause together and give you a lot of Zoom love. So, with that, need to just say, congratulations, everyone, and we're going to get this started with our board president, Mrs. Thomas.
Hi, everybody. So nice to see everyone's face, hi. So, I have the pleasure of reading the first recipient, Anson Ardieta. Anson, where are you? I see you. Anson is a 12th grader, and he is at Menden High School, and he was nominated by Ms. Labarre. Anson Ardieta is awesome. I was lucky enough to be his teacher for two years in a row during his freshman and sophomore years at Menden. Anson always showed up to class ready to learn with a smile on his face. He often contributed to class discussions, asked questions, had great attendance, and always did his work. In addition to his academic accomplishments, Anson was often quick to check in on his classmates and ask them how they were doing. Anson always had a fun story to share with the class, whether it was something that occurred in the previous class period or a story from several years ago. I can recall many moments when he knew to check in on his peers, from a time when he had a classmate with a sick pet at home, to another time when a different classmate was simply having a bad day. He always made an effort to let other people know that he was thinking about them. If you know Anson, you know how passionate he is about his goals as a firefighter and first responder. Anson, I know someone who's sitting here who might be able to help you, Mr. Arusti. A few years ago, Anson was volunteering at an event at the Pittsburgh Fire Department. He invited a few of us to stop by and learn about the fire department. At the event, Anson had a big group of young children circled around him, and he was teaching them how to use a hose to put out a fire. It was obvious that these kids were so appreciative of everything Anson was teaching them. His passion and excitement for his future career is truly contagious. Now that Anson is a senior, the only time I usually see him is in the hallway between bells. Even with a mask on, he's always smiling and asks me how my day is or how the school year is going. Anson has such a positive impact on this community in so many different ways. He cares about others and makes the world a better place on a daily basis. Anson is a great friend to his peers and a role model for all of us. Congratulations, Anson.
Thank you, that means a lot.
Mr. Arusti, you better get on that. He's going to be hired. My next recipient is Allison Beleno, and Allison is a 5th grader at Thornel Road. Where are you, Ally? Hi. If you're looking for a Pittsburgh Pride candidate whose character embodies student citizenship, look no further than Allison Beleno. Ally works hard each and every day, leads by example, is respectful, caring, kind, demonstrates integrity, and always has a smile on her face. Ally is an active member in the community, both inside and outside of school. She is the eternal optimist, putting others before herself and finding pleasure in selfless acts. Ally loves learning and allows her interest in all subjects to guide her in acquiring the best possible education. This ability to block out distractions is a primary contributor to her success both inside and outside the classroom. Ally is a respectful and caring student who goes out of her way to help peers if the need ever arises. She gladly accepts, helps explain math concepts to other students in the class and helps groups experience success when putting together projects, as seen in several class presentations. Ally always does so, does everything with a big smile on her face. If someone is having a bad day, Ally will approach them, asking what's wrong and if she can do anything to help. She recognizes that sometimes all a person needs is someone to listen, while other times it's best to share a funny story. Ally always keeps her work neat and organized, which helps her maximize points in math class, as well as modeling proper expectations to other students while working in group settings or volunteering her work for class critique. Ally is never satisfied with acceptable and always pushes to complete her work to the best of her ability. She is constantly challenging herself and looking for different ways to stretch her learning, whether this be mastering a new writing style or looking for alternative methods to solve a math problem. This inner drive models expected behavior for her classmates and proves that Ally is a leader by example. Ally's personality makes those around her feel comfortable and calm. The level of comfort that Ally helps establish in the classroom fosters the safe learning environment that we are consistently working so hard to achieve and maintain. If the class starts to get sidetracked, Ally has a knack for getting everyone back on course with a thoughtful or insightful question, regardless of the topic. I'll be so sorry when this year comes to an end. However, I'll do my best Ally impression and pass on, pass her on to the middle school with a smile on my face, knowing that she will continue to bring happiness and success to herself and all of those around her. Ally, I don't know if I mentioned that Mr. Shinta was the one who nominated you, so Mr. Shinta, I know you're on tonight. Thanks for being here. And my third recipient is Robert Harrington. Robert, where are you?
Hi.
Hi. Wow, I like your tie.
Thank you.
Yes, you look dapper. So, Robert is a 5th grader from Park Road Elementary School, and he was nominated by Mrs. Rojas and Dr. Balsamo. We're pleased to nominate Robert Harrington for the Pittsburgh Pride Award. Dr. Balsamo says, Robert has been an outstanding role model and student in the six years that I've known him. He's very empathetic, he displays a high level of caring kindness and practicing acceptance of all. He always has a positive attitude and is always willing to help his classmates and school. Ever since he was a young student, he's gone out of his way to say hi to me, ask questions, and just work to connect with other people to make them feel at ease. He's always shown a maturity in speaking to adults beyond his years. He's respectful, kind, and thoughtful. He has a wonderful sense of humor and brings a smile to students and adults. This year, he was one of our first 5th grade morning announcers and served as a frequent sub if peers were not available. On his announcing days, his humor would often have the main office in stitches. He truly was a bright start to our day on those mornings. On his second duty as announcer, he even convinced Dr. Balsamo to allow he and his partner to do the announcements in a British accent, which, I'm going to test you on that, Robert, I want to hear that. He pulled this off with aplomb and again had the main office laughing when he was done. Mrs. Rojas notes that Robert is also a Boy Scout and has served as one of the students who takes the flag down at the end of each day, and has taught others how to perform this important role in a highly respectful way. In class, he routinely checks in with her and peers to say hi, ask them how they're doing, and see if they need any help. At recess, he is that student who works to ensure that all kids are included and goes out of his way to compliment peers and make them feel part of the group. Robert is a motivated student. He's exemplary in his own behavior and interactions and helping and leading both peers and younger students. He truly helps make us a better school community through his actions and his attitude. He is one of those students who brings a smile to your face when you see him and speak with him, and one leaves a conversation with Robert feeling brighter as you move on with your day. We are very proud to nominate Robert for Pittsburgh Pride. Congratulations, Robert.
Thank you.
And with that, I am going to turn it over to Mr. Arusti, our vice president, who's going to read the next three recipients.
Good evening, everyone. How are you? Christopher Johnson, where are you?
Hello.
Hello, how are you?
Good.
Welcome. So, Christopher is in 8th grade at Cockens Road, and he was nominated by the Purple Team. The Purple Team is proud to nominate Christopher Johnson for Pittsburgh Pride, because he exemplifies everything that the award stands and what an outstanding student he is. This award acknowledges outstanding citizenship, the bettering of the community around the recipient. During a school year that many would describe as challenging and in no way routine, Chris has always remained upbeat and happy in his classes. He has a wonderful sense of humor and is very welcoming to all in his classes. It is not uncommon for Chris to lead a classroom discussion in one moment and then lend a helping hand to a classmate in the next. Every day, Chris's teachers get to see his maximum effort and eagerness to learn and its positive impact on those around him. On a daily basis, Chris demonstrates his great sense of humor and positive attitude that is truly contagious. When he was out of the classroom recently, there was a noticeable void. His teachers and classmates missed his participation and leadership in the lessons, discussions. He is a leader and a great contributor to the classroom. He is a self-starter and works incredibly well with his peers and individually, and shows a great maturity as a leader, I'm sorry, as a learner with his perseverance and follow-through. He is a great advocate. He is a great advocate, asks thoughtful questions, and is a positive presence in the learning environment. With the increased use of technology in class, Chris has been very helpful in problem-solving, anything that comes up. He is always very willing to help his peers when they need assistance with computer issues to help keep things moving along. He demonstrates an excellent amount of patience and understanding with his classmates that goes beyond his age. Christopher Johnson is an outstanding student, classmate, and friend. He makes our community better through his words, actions, and presence. We are proud to nominate him for the Pittsburgh Pride Award. Congratulations, Christopher. Next up, Cody Judd, where are you, Cody? Are you out there?
Hi.
Hi, Cody, how are ya? Let's hear what-
Good, how are you?
I'm great tonight, good to see you. So Cody is in seventh grade at Barker Road, and he was nominated by the Red Team, Ms. Murray, Ms. Fay, Ms. Phillips, Ms. DiPaolo, Ms. Lapis, and Ms. Ma- Maigan. Cody Judd exemplifies model citizenship in many ways. Academically, Cody consistently demonstrates his best effort in all tasks and applies the feedback that he receives from teachers to improve his work. During classes, Cody is an active participant that contributes to class discussions and listens to the contributions of his peers. Cody has also been able to balance his commitment to schoolwork while participating in two swim teams outside of school. He participates in modified swim as well as team, a team through YMCA. Most importantly, Cody demonstrates model citizenship through the respect and kindness that he displays with all his peers and adults. Cody is kind to everyone. He arrives to school each day with a positive attitude and a desire to learn. He displays a sincere interest in the well-being of his classmates and is nonjudgmental and supportive when other students are having a difficult day. Cody truly displays Pittsburgh pride through his hard work, respect, kindness, and empathy. He would be an excellent candidate for the Student Citizenship Award. Congratulations, Cody. And the third recipient that I'll be reading about tonight is Ian Pennington. Ian, where are you this, this evening? You out there?
Hi.
Hey, Ian, how are you?
Good.
Nice to see you. Ian is a third grader at Allen Creek Elementary School, and he was nominated by Sarah Dean. "It is my pleasure to nominate Ian Pennington for the Pittsburgh Pride Award. Ian is a perfect candidate for the Pittsburgh Pride as he exemplifies many character traits necessary of such a prestigious award. Ian understands the pride and responsibility that comes with being a third grade student at Allen Creek. He exemplifies doing your best work and being your best self. He also consistently demonstrates our school character traits of being accepting, cooperative, empathetic, and supportive." I believe that's Aces. "He is a compassionate individual who has demonstrated these qualities consistently throughout his student career at Allen Creek Elementary School. Ian is a role model for his peers and leads by example. He consistently maintains a positive demeanor, all while helping those around him. Students in his class look up to him. They admire his understanding of those around him, his willingness to go above and beyond what is expected of him, and his ability to handle whatever is thrown his way. Not only is Ian highly respected by his peers and staff at Allen's Creek Elementary School, they know that he is a positive role model many can look up to. Ian continues to hold himself to a high standard and completes all of his work at an incredibly high level of excellence. His focus and determination elevates all other students around him. Not only does his high quality of work get the attention of his peers, they try to match his level of consistency in the classroom. Ian raises everyone's effort through his focused questions as well as his ability to make connections with his academics. Other students especially take notice when they are given the option to choose their partners, as many gravitate to Ian wanting the opportunity to work with him. Students also seek his advice on their work, as he is more than happy to assist his classmates. I often hear him, hear him complimenting his peers' work and encouraging them. He is able to give great feedback and suggestions that are well-received by his peers. Ian asks thought-provoking questions during whole-group interactions and instruction, works cooperatively in groups, and goes out of his way to make each day a better for those around him. Ian works to understand, recognize, and celebrate each person's unique differences, and he helps and encourages others to do the same. When I think of Ian, I think of a student who knows, who shows maturity well beyond his nine years. Ian is deserving of the Pittsburgh Pride Award and consistently demonstrates the values we work so hard to cultivate in Pittsburgh. Congratulations, Ian. Great job. Now we welcome Mr. Piro back up.
So Mr. Rusty might get mad at me for sharing this, so I apologize in advance, Mr. Rusty. Mr. Rusty had back surgery, and he came in tonight for our board meeting so he can read all of his Pittsburgh Pride recipients, because it's, it's that important to, to him and our board, so thank you for being here, Mr. Rusty. So I have the final three, and I get to start with John Rodriguez. Where are you, John? Are you out there? Is there another screen? Hey, John, can you hear me?
Hi.
There he is, John, my man. John, it's so good to see you. How you doing? Anything you want to say to the world?
Hi, everyone.
So I have to give a huge thank you to Mrs. Howland, Mr. Puma, because they saved me another letter that I would have to write, because if they didn't nominate you, I would have. So here we go, John. "It is with great pleasure that we nominate John Rodriguez for the Pittsburgh Pride Award. John's positive impact on Sutherland High School's culture is immeasurable, and we are very proud to call him a Sutherland Knight. John's personal style exudes kindness and generosity at all times, and he has had the unique ability to light up a room with his warm smile. There is no doubt that these qualities led to his hiring as a patient care technician at Rochester General Hospital. Impressively, John has maintained his position since the summer before his junior year, working throughout the COVID-19 pandemic, which is amazing, John. John displays his passion for topics such as equal rights and social justice through his school and community involvements. He has been an active member of the Diversity Club since he started high school. Through this organization, he has helped plan events like Hispanic Heritage Month to help raise awareness within our school community. Last fall, John and a group of Pittsburgh students planned and hosted a countywide Rock to Change Student Event, which brought together students from varying backgrounds to work together in hopes to address race relations in the Rochester area. This work continues this year, and John is one of the go-to members of the group. John is a strong leader with the Sutherland School community. He brings a positive attitude and natural leadership to his many activities. He is a role model in all that he does, making him an easy selection as a link leader. Through this organization, upperclassmen mentor freshmen, students, as they make the transition to the high school setting. John quickly eases the worries of this group as he explains and reassures all the positive aspects found within high school life. John's leadership skills, combined with his desire for continuous improvement, is an inspiration for everyone, adults and students throughout the community. Congratulations, John." John, if I can also just add really quick that I have the utmost respect for you, just on a, on a side note. And I think you're a tremendous leader for this, for the district, and I think you're exactly the type of person that's going to make this world a better place. You've certainly done it for Pittsburgh, and know that I'm with you 100% of the way with whatever you need. Thanks, John. And next, I get to see the very, very patient kindergartner, Joseph Russell. Where are you, Joseph? So I think first, a quick message to the parents. It seems like yesterday, I was sitting on the couch with my kindergartner, who is now a senior. One of the big differences, he was never recognized for a Pride Award. But how fast times go by, and to just enjoy every moment. And I also, I also find it interesting how both your son is starting his year in a real weird environment, as my son leaves his school in a really weird environment, and anyways, just a, a little anecdotal comment there. It's my own therapy, I go through therapy out loud every, every once in a while now. So Joseph, you've been nominated by Mrs. Wilson. Can you see Mrs. Wilson on the screen?
Uh huh.
Mrs. Wilson, can you give a wave? Oh, look at Mrs. Wilson. And here we go. "Joseph, you are a remarkable kindergarten student." Exclamation point. "Joseph is a remote student this year in kindergarten. The beginning of kindergarten can be challenging for many students, and doing it remotely is even more challenging. Joseph has been showing off his very best since day one. He starts and ends each class session with a smile. Joseph is a kind and so considerate of his classmates. He is always listening with his eyes and his ears. He contributes readily to our daily class discussions and lessons. As many of you know, this can be very challenging through Zoom, but Joseph is always attentive and ready to participate. Joseph works hard every day, both during synchronous and asynchronous instruction." So I never knew those words when I was in kindergarten, just for the record. "He submits all of his assignments daily and attends all scheduled Zoom sessions. The work he submits is always done well and with care. It is apparent that he puts his very best effort into his work. I am most impressed with Joseph's ability to attend and engage in our class meetings each and every day. He is enthusiastic about learning, and it is contagious. Joseph is a role model for his classmates. He truly deserves to be recognized. He stands out among his peers. Joseph represents how kindness, compassion, and the eagerness to learn can make a difference in the lives of others. He definitely has made a difference in my life during this challenging school year. I know that I can count on him to be ready to learn and to be an active participant each time we meet as a class. I feel very fortunate to have Joseph as part of my class. I am extremely proud of him and his positive attitudes towards learning." From Mrs. Wilson, congratulations.
Thank you. All you have to do is just listen.
That's awesome, Joseph. Mrs. Wilson, you want to say anything to Joseph?
I, I just, I'm so, so pleased that he's being recognized. He deserves every minute of it. He is just a rock star in the classroom, our Zoom classroom every day, and just, he, he's made a huge difference in my year, so I'm very appreciative, and he's so, so deserving.
Thank you, nice job. Good job, Joseph. And our most patient nominee goes to our third grader, Daniel Shi, and I didn't even mean to rhyme that. So here we go. Daniel Shi, you were recommended or acknowledged by Mrs. Stewart, who is our instructional challenge teacher and pod teacher, and here's what she had to say. "I have the opportunity to work with Daniel for the past three years, and he is truly an unsung hero. Daniel is quiet, unassuming, and humble, and he always does the right thing without looking for any special accolades. He has been a gift to our school. The everyday moments with Daniel are nothing short of remarkable. He is the student who always stands up to run an errand, pick up the laptop cart, or help to explain something to another student." And Daniel, I'm gonna read these next two sentences, and I have to tell you, these two mean the most to me in the whole world. Okay, so listen to these. "If in a conflict situation, Daniel will listen to the perspective of others, and he will always take the high road. This comes naturally to him, and his kindness is never forced." I love those two sentences, Daniel, it's really important. "He is innately tuned in to the feelings of others, and he consistently shows empathy to classmates and to adults alike. Daniel is a student who takes pride in everything he does. He is a role model for others and always strives to do his best. When faced with big projects, he plans and uses his time carefully, taking the time to revise and make improvements to his work. He is a voracious reader and puts tremendous effort into his responses. As a result, his contributions are insightful and thought-provoking, furthering the thinking of those around him. Whether it's sports or academics, what is important to Daniel is that he keeps growing in every one of his endeavors. The daily effort he gives is reflective of his values, and he serves as an inspiration to others. The Meddon Center community has also benefited from Daniel's leadership skills. In the classroom, he initiates dialogue with others and helps to facilitate meaningful discussions with his classmates. He possesses skills well beyond his years and knows how to respectfully disagree with someone or pose a unique point of view while still allowing others to feel heard. Daniel's actions have promoted inclusivity in our classroom, and he has helped others to feel confident taking risks with their learning. Daniel is an exceptional student, but moreover, an amazing human being. Daniel is the kind of person who makes you better for knowing him. Congratulations, Daniel, you have many reasons to be proud. Great job, Daniel." Daniel, do you have anything to say? I think you're on mute.
Thank you, teachers. Thank you, Mrs. Stewart, this moon, thank you.
Mrs. Stewart, any, anything you'd like to share?
Just, it's been a joy to get to know Daniel and his family so well. He's just an amazing kid, well-deserving of this. Good job, Daniel.
Proud of you, Daniel.
Thank you.
So I, I would close with this, I think, is that one's character often is shown during real difficult times, and this has been a real tough year for a lot of us. And for you to receive this recognition this year really is reflective of, of your character that is, is so important. And I want to thank your parents and your guardians and your family and everyone that's had an impact on you, because we need more people like you, not only in the Pittsburgh schools, but, but everywhere across the globe. You truly are amazing students, you're amazing citizens, and know that everyone in Pittsburgh really appreciates and loves you, so parents, guardians, family, give, give them a big hug tonight and whatever else they want for the rest of their lives. So with that, if we can give all of our recipients a round of applause. Thanks again to all those who nominated. Have a great night, everyone.
All right, if I have, if I may have, a motion to approve the minutes from January 25th. Thanks, Renee and Irene. Any edits? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Board of Education reports, a lot of these dates are changing by the minute, so I apologize. So if you could just make some notes, because today I actually heard of a couple different changes. Our next board leadership meeting is the same, it's the 3rd of March. The executive committee meeting is probably going to change because that is the same date that we have a Board of Education meeting, so it's hard to be in two places at once. So we're looking at the 28th of April. Deb, if you want to just jot that down, and we can confirm that once I hear definitively.
Just a, and just for the record, if, if we need to, we may also move our board meeting that night.
Information exchange, that has also been moved. That is actually going to be- That is actually going to be the 24th, which is the same as Labor Relations, but it's going to be at 4:00 PM. So if you want to make a change to your calendar. Legislative is the 3rd, right, Val? That has not changed. Labor Relations is the 24th. As I mentioned, that remains the same at noon. And then Steering, the next meeting is the 17th of March. Communication Outreach Advisory Committee, we actually have an urgent meeting this week, and that's relative to advocacy. And we are creating talking points together with the, the group at Monroe County School Boards along with, and that actually is a group now that's much larger than it was. We have many school districts that are now represented on that committee. So more to come there, and we are meeting this Thursday, the 11th. Val, I passed over the Legislative Committee, but I'd like you to report out on the last meeting that we had since we met with new, newly elected legislators.
Sure. So last Thursday, we invited our, all of our freshman legislators in for a forum. Most of them came. We had Assembly members Jeff Gallahan, Josh Jensen, Jen Lunsford, and Damon Meeks, and Senators Sarmar Brook, Jeremy Cooney, and Ed Rapp attend the forum. And we, because we were using meeting time, we didn't have a whole lot of time to discuss things with them because of the number of legislators who attended. But we basically talked about our, our legislative priorities, which were the general ones are funding and mandates, of course. And we briefly touched on a little bit about school districts needing some information as quickly as possible regarding our upcoming budget vote and Board of Ed elections. And much of what we, much of what the legislators shared with us definitely aligns with what Darren mentioned in his budget proposal tonight, the budget presentation tonight. They all talked about education being a top priority and wanting to make sure the budget reflects that, all of them. So we had Democrats and Republicans in that group, and they're all very aligned in that case. And they're very concerned about the executive budget that it proposes to use refunds, the ones that Darren was talking about, the CRSSA Act to balance the state budget. And the intention of those funds were to help us with COVID costs, not to balance the budget. So of course, as I mentioned, that drop off for '22, '23, right? Is concerning as well. They also did talk about, there was some discussion around looking, looking for legislation for additional financial sources. We'll see where that leads. I think there's a bill in the works, but nothing's been written or approved or moving forward yet in the Assembly by Damon Meeks. They do seem to be very well versed in our needs, but we would definitely need to give them some very specific information regarding our district needs to help them advocate on our behalf. They were very thankful to board members and also very thankful to school districts for doing everything they can and taking on the task to reopen schools safely this school year. And I appreciate that. We're going to be meeting with our veteran legislators individually through the whole month of February and March, which is typically our advocacy time. And as Darren mentioned again, that budget cutoff date, funnel budget should be due, well, hopefully April 1st. So we want to get in with them. Amy and I are going to be seeing Marjorie Burns. Sarah Clark, who was also freshman legislator, could not attend, but I'll be attending her meeting, I think, in March as well. And Matt and I split up some of the other ones depending on, we don't want to take a place of somebody who is in district, but if the need is shown, we'll help them do that. I think that's about it. Do you have anything else you want to add?
No, I was really impressed as well. I thought that they had done their homework. And I know that they've spent quite a bit of time with Sherri Johnson, the Director of Monroe County School Boards, to educate themselves prior to the election, knowing full well that they would be hitting the ground running. And I think that that is exactly what they're doing. So I'm thrilled at what I did hear from them. And I, I think that, you know, going forward, that was a good, positive move in the right direction. I think it's going to be more important, and I've said this, I sound like I'm a broken record, but I think that each individual school district will need to sit down and, and express to some of these legislators, what are our needs versus our neighbors' needs? So more to come there for sure. But a very great meeting, and actually, Val, you did an outstanding job. You and Matt met with us from Westyranaquayte, did an amazing job facilitating. So thank you for that. And also, it's been a busy week with advocacy. So Renee, would you like to share out the meeting that you attended?
Sure. Also, last Thursday, February 4th, there was a virtual town hall. Mental health of essential workers was the topic, and it was sponsored by Sarmar Brook. She did an incredible job. There were over 100 people in attendance. It was really interesting to have that many people on a virtual town hall being able to share their ideas. They broke us up into small groups based on our, our careers. So obviously, I was in an education grouping. And it was interesting to hear from not just other local public schools, but from colleges and universities in the areas while that everyone is having very similar struggles and have similar concerns around the topic of mental health. What Sarmar was ultimately looking for were different concerns, like finding commonalities between all of us and getting ideas as to what she could do to help, whether it's public schools, private schools, colleges and universities, in regards to how do we support our students and our staff? It was, it went on for at least two hours. It really was quite informational. We all got back together at the very end. We all shared out, listening to one another what our concerns were. And in addition to that, I thought it was great that the whole entire meeting started out with groups of people from local, local areas to help out with mental health issues, like the Mental Health Association, National Alliance of Mental Illness, ORNAMI, even Goodwill of Finger Lakes Region. There are many different resources that they made available to all of us to be able to pass on. So that's information I can share with you, and we can share with the remainder of the staff.
That's great. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have other dates to remember. We do have a break coming up, the President's Week recess, which is the 15th through the 19th of February. And our next regularly scheduled board meeting will be the 23rd of February. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Darren Cooney for our financial report.
Thank you. Just one item on the agenda is to do repairs and modernize the elevator at Sutherland High School. It's a little bit above the threshold for your policy 5412. It's on state contracts. That's why there was not a bid. $79,000, and it's everything from updating the car to all the electronics and the interior of the elevator itself.
Thanks, Darren. May I have a motion to approve? Thanks, Robyn.
Thank you, Ted.
Any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Thanks, Darren.
Thank you.
Human Resource Report, Mike.
First, your consideration, the professional staff report. It has the appointment of a paraprofessional if he's retired, and then the supplemental for coaching type in to the new sports staff.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the professional staff report? Thanks, Val and Renee. Any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you. And second, your consideration is the support staff report, the appointment of a bus driver, and the appointment of a.
Thanks, Mike. May I have a motion to approve, please? Thanks, Ted and Pete. Any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. I think that makes it official now, Mike. Thank you very much. Special Education Report, Elizabeth. Thank you. Superintendent's Report, Mike.
There will be a need for an executive session this evening to discuss pending litigation. Actually, current litigation.
May I have a motion? Thanks, Pete. Thanks, Irene. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried.
So officially, want to say thank you again to Mike Leone. This is his last board meeting. His last official day is Friday. Mike, just, I know you had planned on retiring a little bit earlier, and it's been your loyalty and dedication to the school district that had ultimately led you to agreeing quite easily to staying on a little bit longer. And it's actually remarkable, what, what you shared earlier tonight in the board workshop, the amount of work that had to get done for our students to have a place to go this year with adults in front of them with a robust program. So a real special thank you for all of the scheduling and staffing and nuances that you've had to contend with. And probably no one else could have done it the way you did, so thank you. So Amy had mentioned some things about advocacy at the, at the county level, and we have been working on advocacy at the district level, which my sense is will also spawn to the, well beyond Pittsburgh. But just to ground people a little bit, if you, if we go back to, to last summer, we informed the community that we were going to make significant changes that would allow our kindergarten through fifth grade students to be able to come back five days a week. So I guess technically four point something days a week. And in order to do this, we had to make a lot of changes to our systems and our structure. We, we pulled staff from the secondary schools, and we reinvented how to use other staff, such as teachers on special assignment, our project challenge teachers, our paraprofessionals, and so on. And I have to give our PDTA, our teachers and paraprofessional union a huge thank you because I, I think in most districts, this would have been an impossible feat. The, the Teachers Union literally has taken their, their contract and set it aside. And it's really been remarkable to, and not surprising, but to focus on whatever we needed to do to get our K-5 students in, in full time. So a huge thank you to them. But I think it's also important to understand why we, we focused on elementary students, knowing that we can only probably focus on, on, on one group, given staffing and space. So our focus on elementary students was a combination of lessons, I think, that we learned when we shut down last March, which includes elementary students needing a lot more support at home, using different learning platforms, how to log in, how to log out, how to troubleshoot, how to navigate technology, how to respond to different prompts on Zoom, which really led us to, to appreciate the fact that an adult really needed to be home to, to help our elementary students learn. And we also recognized that this model not only supports the academic and social portions of our K-5 students, but the reality of the economic needs of our, our K-5 families. And, and the reality that if we were to do a hybrid or remote, then our families would have to make choices regarding work and, and, and other major family decisions around staying at home. So that brought us to, to 612. And as we, as we planned for 612, we looked at guidance and also best practices, which led us to the hybrid model that we have right now. But at the same time, we also recognize that it's, it's not ideal. So we hear, we see, we know that having students in two days a week does take its toll as, as this pandemic has on, on so many facets of our world and our life. But for our secondary students, we, we do know that they have changed their pace of life, their way of life. They have had a significant decrease in, in social situations and academics and assistance and, and everything that goes with it. So we, we understand that. We believe that that's the case, and, and we're doing our best to try to support our students in every way we can. So having said that, I, I again would just say if, if your child is having any type of mental health issues, to reach out to the building principal so we can find the right supports for them. But in the meantime, I think that all of us are feeling a sense of some, at some level, I, I would guess, I don't want to project, but I'm thinking all of us are feeling some type of fatigue or despair as we've been in this for 11 months now. And the hardest, the hardest part is that we're, we're not quite sure where the light is at the end of the tunnel or what the end in mind is. And so we've pulled together our advocacy team, which is a combination of community members, alumni, teachers, administrators, parents, board members, myself. And we process through what, what it is that we really want to ask. What, what is it that we want to advocate for? And I think more than anything, we, we want to advocate for what metrics would specifically be needed for us to, to consider reopening again. And so I'll read you a couple portions of the letter. And this letter, we will be sending out this week to our community with the hopes that the community will help us advocate with legislators, the governor, health officials, et cetera. So here, here are portions of it. "We are advocating for a common set of data-driven metrics that will serve as guideposts to identify when it is appropriate to reopen fully. The decisions to reopen high-risk sports has led to many questions from our community that range from why can't performing arts reopen to why can't students attend school more fully? It is our sincere hope that you will now consider a more equitable approach in allowing additional in-person academic experiences as well as other student interests such as performing arts. Since the onset of COVID-19, we have seen different metrics used to close down our schools. We are asking for the same concept in order to reopen more fully. The one non-negotiable metric needs to be that 100% of our staff have access to be fully vaccinated. Beyond this metrics, we ask for the, that definitive parameters be established based on database measures such as seven-day rolling average rates, school district positivity rates, in-school transmission rates. We are almost 11 months into this pandemic, and if for no other reason, our school communities need to see that there is a light at the end of this tunnel. We are asking that medical professionals assign values to the above metrics that can serve as that light. Once we know what factors need to exist in order to have the option to bring more students back to school, we can then set community goals and create local plans. Development of these metrics provide an opportunity to promote clarity after contending with almost a year of uncertainty and confusion." So if we were to peel that back a little bit more, we, we need to know what the end in mind is. I, I think about in, in almost anything in life, people that are successful have a goal that they try to achieve, and they know how to get there. And our problem is, we know that the goal is to open school, but we don't know how to get there. And so what we're asking for is guidance. What specific parameters need to be in place in order for us to reduce the restrictions we're under so that we, we can open fully? I, I want to clarify the vaccine part for a second. We have a lot of people that work in this district, and I would guess in every district, that are working right now that are considered a high-risk category. So if it's age, or weight, or diabetes, you name it, we have people that are hanging in there, that range from bus drivers to teachers to food service workers. And they're here with us because we have a safe environment right now. Our protocols are working. People feel comfortable. And we're not transmitting the virus within our schools. So we're. So, um, we're, we're doing the, we're doing the right thing right now. My, my fear of opening, um, without having access to vaccines, um, is that I don't know if we could open. Uh, so, I don't know if we reduced our, um, social distancing, uh, to whatever amount, um, whatever it takes to bring people back in, I don't know if that's even feasible, uh, because I don't know if we would have, uh, staff that would feel, um, safe and comfortable being here. And to be quite honest, I don't know if I would feel comfortable, uh, putting them in that position. So, what we're hoping for is that you can help us, uh, to get, um, vaccinations here, uh, for those that choose to have them. Um, and, and that's a huge hurdle to overcome, uh, but once that's overcome, um, then let's continue. Let, let's, let's ask our legislators for definitive metrics to, to reopen beyond that. We are, um, in the process of, uh, loosening up some things. Uh, so, for example, we're working with the senior class on, um, uh, being able to, uh, go to leave, uh, during lunches, so going from a closed campus to an open class, open campus. Uh, we are, um, making, um, shifts at the middle school to have students switching for classes versus staying in their same class for, for core areas. So, we're doing everything that we can to collect our own data, uh, to take it, um, one step at a time to, um, uh, to be thoughtful, but also to, uh, explore, um, our boundaries and what, and what is, um, safe and what makes, what makes sense moving forward. So, we're going to ask for your help, uh, to, to sign on to this, to essentially ask, um, legislators and, and, um, county health officials and state health officials to give us the metrics. Tell us what it takes to reopen schools, uh, safely so that we can, um, set our own goals to do that. Uh, shifting gears, uh, does anyone have any questions regarding that? Uh, shifting gears, um, we have, um, signed on with, uh, Tasha Potter, who is going to serve as one of our, uh, inclusivity consultants, uh, and she will be assisting us, uh, in the following categories, um, restorative practices, accessing equity, analysis of data, uh, human resources, which is recruitment, hiring, and retention, and promotion, um, helping us with a system audit, uh, and helping us, uh, build capacity of others to identify and disrupt inequity, inequities in school, um, and some other. Um, in speaking with her, uh, she did, um, verify that the two biggest things that we can do this year, uh, is to, uh, create an equity policy and a code of conduct. Uh, she's 100% on board with that. She's assisting with both, along with our committees. She feels that, um, that work is, um, should serve as a foundation, uh, for all of our future goal-setting. So, I'm excited to work with Tasha and excited, um, for the work, uh, that we will all engage in with her. Uh, she will be attending our next board meeting, uh, virtually, uh, and she'll introduce herself to the board and the community and, um, kind of give a, a, a better clarity regard regarding the services she can provide us. And I think that's it. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Sure.
Okay, Ted and Irene? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Old business? New business? Okay. We have come to public comment session, and we don't have anyone in the waiting room. So, we, with that, we will close public comment session. May I have a motion to adjourn, please? Thanks, Pete and Renee. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Thanks so much, everyone. Have a good night.